MJ, good morning. What, are you and I the only two that didn't go anyplace? Didn't go anyplace?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Oh, did you go?
Oh, yeah, I was back in Montana twice this last time.
Francis is there now.
Francis is not.
No, he's not. He won't be here.
He's probably just trying to...
He's back, honey, like tonight, because he's got that, you know, tomorrow. You know, we're gonna shuttle there tomorrow, so he's back for that.
Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
It's the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing, no one will close the first portion, first public comment portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next item is item number two, which is to approve the agenda. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the agenda?
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is to receive your general manager's report. We would like to begin today's general manager's report by expressing our deepest condolences to the victims of last week's horrific event. Despite this tragedy, our community has proven itself to be resilient. Our first responders, local organizations, community leaders, and residents have taken action to help each other heal. At the RTC, we supported the Valleywide Emergency Management System with transit service to hospitals for those with non-life-threatening injuries, and to service to various designated safe areas for family members and friends. We were also able to support first responders with mobile fueling units to keep generators and vehicles running, and our FAST department, our traffic management department, provided camera access to law enforcement as well as regular public updates on road closures and detours throughout the event. Our contractors helped transport victims to safety and continued to remind the community of the need for blood donations. We'd like to recognize two special drivers from Keolis who quickly jumped into action when the incident unfolded, one of whom is here with us today. Once he realized what was happening, Richard Kuna stopped the bus and opens its doors to festival attendees rushing down the street. Approximately fifty people boarded the bus and were in various states of shock. Richard maintained his poise and calm, reassured them through the loudspeaker that they were safe, and he was taking care of them. Antonio McLando, who could not join us today, encountered a police barricade on his route and made himself available to Metro to provide assistance. He transported injured victims to hospitals, all while keeping them calm and offering them water. Despite being a new operator, Antonio maintained his composure during the major crisis. Richard and Antonio are the very definition of Vegas strong. Please join me in recognizing their heroic acts of courage, and I'd like to ask Richard to come down, if he would, to say a few words. He's with us.
It's the mic. The only thing I can say is I'm really humbled and thankful for the recognition. I know that was only one cog in the wheel. There were many, many drivers doing the same thing, basically doing what we had to. And, thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple more recognitions, if you want to stay up there. On a lighter note, we'd like to recognize an operator from MV Senior Transportation, Dallas Latham. Is Dallas with us? Dallas, if you could come down? Dallas joined MV in 2014. He is a dedicated employee who understands the challenges in transporting our senior citizens, and he takes great pride and care to assist them in their travels. Mr. Latham knows many passengers by name, where they are regularly traveling to, and which stops they use so he can keep an eye out for them. In addition to training drivers on proper operation procedures, Mr. Latham takes time to suggest valuable tips to new drivers on how to better assist our passengers, as well as point out landmarks to help them stay on their routes. So, congratulations, Dallas, and thank you.
Excuse me for a minute. I'd like to thank Art, my general manager, for nominating me, and my lovely wife up in the back row there in the chair. I just do a wonderful job. I try hard, and my people love me, I love them, and we always have a good time. Thank you.
Thanks. We have one more recognition. Next, we'd like to recognize an outstanding operator for TransDev, Annette Esparza. Is Annette with us? Annette joined TransDev with a unique background in the study of child psychology and in the field of hospice care. She is able to understand and effectively interact with individuals with various personalities and learning styles. Mrs. Esparza consistently demonstrates compassion and safety as she transports some of our most vulnerable passengers. As a trainer, Annette has shown dedication, initiative, and leadership while enhancing new hire training, retaining existing drivers, and executing consistent safety instructional courses. Her commitment to providing safe and caring service is a great asset to both the agency and to our community. Thank you, Annette.
Well, I just wanted to thank you to my company for nominating me, and thank you to the Lord for bringing me here, because I actually found a job that I feel that I'm worth something, because our passengers are the greatest, and if it wasn't for them, I just don't know who I would be. Thank you.
Annette, thank you for those very touching words. Next item in the GM report is an update on transit fixed route service changes. We're preparing to implement our annual fixed route service change on December 3 of this year. This year's service change represents a 2.4 increase in service hours, and as you recall, we did a significant decrease back during the recession, and we have slowly but surely started to increase our frequency and hours again. So, we'll be extending service hours on seven routes. Frequency will increase on ten routes, and there'll be an extension of Route 105, which is Martin Luther King, to the North Fifth Street and Clark County 215 area. So, we look forward to that, and MJ and her team are preparing for that to go into operation on December 3. Next, I want to quickly, the final item in our general manager's report is to share with you some of what we learned during our recent fact-finding trip to Atlanta. We focused on public safety, traffic, and transportation management in and around its stadiums during game days. Southern Nevada stakeholders learned about best practices and firsthand experiences from the best of the best, who worked in the construction and operations of two newly-built stadiums in Atlanta that opened this year. One is the Mercedes-Benz Stadium, home to the Atlanta Falcons football, and the SunTrust Park, which is home to the Atlanta Braves stadium. I want to say that we're very lucky to get to do these tours. They are both very new, in fact, they are, some of, the Falcons stadium is the newest stadium in the United States. And when we attended and got to watch the operations of the game against Buffalo Bills, it was only their second game that they've had there. So, as we spoke with them, they had lots of very fresh lessons learned for us. They had some very tangible items that they shared, things like, "You want to make sure that you've got TVs in close proximity to the jail cells, because otherwise, some of these, some of your fans will go crazy if they can't be watching the game at the same time." We also learned the value of something called a pedestrian scramble, and I'll share some information on that. But we also took away a lot of intangible lessons as well. We walked away with a clear understanding from Atlanta, and we are, at this point, have the ability to call them mentors, that we need to start conversations regularly as our community collectively prepares to build, open, and operate this stadium. And by that, we mean not just the stadium themselves, but also all the agencies that will be integral and a part of a successful opening and a successful operation of this facility for our community. So, the partners would include Clark County Department and Department of Transportation, the Raiders, as well as their contractors, their engineers, and any other local governments that may be impacted, to start developing comprehensive transportation management plans and operation plans, security plans, to move people in and around the stadium during game days and special events. I have spoken with Yolanda King, county manager, and she has offered to take a leadership role in starting to convene all of us who will have a responsibility for helping to execute this project. We'll meet, when she is ready to set it up, we'll start meeting regularly to share each of our responsibilities and each of the efforts and projects that we have going on in preparing for the stadium. So, I look forward to her leadership in establishing that collaboration. I'm going to share with you a few more slides, a little more informally. When we met with, we had a full day of panels, but one of the things that they wanted to make clear, we asked, "So, was parking and transportation an important conversation piece for your community as you started to put this project together?" And they shared with us this video, so.
Been a while since I've done one of these.
This is Alan Iverson.
Are you making a comeback?
You funny, man.
I noticed the Braves hat. Are you a fan?
Definitely. I've been a Braves fan since I was little.
What do you think of the new ballpark?
I got a tour a while back. Sum it up, it was great. Had a great time.
We've heard parking may be an issue.
Parking? The best franchise in all of baseball, and we're in here talking about parking?
What are we talking about?
I know we're not talking about parking.
Is it going to be a hassle to get to these games?
Got fourteen thousand spaces. See, this was, this was a joke.
It's an important issue to the fans.
I know it's important, but we worried about parking? Not the game, but parking? Look, I know they got a plan. Man.
Their point to us is that parking and transportation will continue to be very important conversation pieces to your community. They will always want to know, "What are you doing in order to be able to, so that I can park conveniently and get in and out of the facility conveniently?" So, with that, we were very blessed to get to spend time with an extensive amount of people while we were in Atlanta. We had panel discussions with everybody from construction groups to operators, security, community impact groups, economic development groups, traffic management panels, public transportation panels, and even some representatives from Rideshare, who shared with us their insights on what makes a successful facility. I would have to say, we started out with the most amazing, engaging speaker, and that is the mayor of Atlanta, Mayor Reed. And I know Commissioner Brown and Mayor March were with us, and I'm sure you would agree that this is an extremely dynamic, strong leader. And he is, and his team are certainly credited with a lot of the success that this stadium has had in terms of its acceptance by the community. We are, we actually have very similar, we have some similarities with Atlanta. They have fifty-one million visitors a year, so they actually have more visitors a year than we do. Last year, they had 4.1 billion in construction underway, and this year, so far, they're slated to have about $5 billion worth of construction underway. So, it is a city that is also growing, much like ours. Their Falcons stadium was 1.2 billion, of which 200 million came from room tax. The mayor made it very clear that to pull this off and to truly have community support behind it, you've got to have strong community leaders and partners. He convened a group of twenty-five different CEOs in Atlanta to talk regularly about how they make this stadium right for the community. They said, "If we don't get this, the community right, then we've failed. How do we use this stadium to really uplift the community?" And his advice to us is, "Be careful, because you will be hustled by, you'll be hustled by just about everyone who wants something out of this." So, you need to be able to screen for that. They talked a lot about their traffic plan. They felt that they had a great traffic plan. They worked hard to educate fans and educate the local community, but made it very clear that different events, whether it's an NFL game, or a Metallica concert, or a Billy Joel concert, have very, very different demographics and different travel patterns. And so, you'll need to be prepared. They recommend using the exact same traffic plan, no matter what, but recognizing that the demographics and the characteristics will be different for each event. We spent time touring, so not only did we have the panels, but we also did some shadowing exercises, where we went with both the Braves and the Falcons and shadowed their operations people. In this case, we're looking at the traffic management centers. Their advice to us was, "Use technology to the full extent that you can, partnering with ways, which we already do anyways, to make sure you are diffusing and dispersing traffic to as much as possible, and giving people alternative routes and alternative touchpoints to your facility. Pulling people off of the freeway as soon as possible at whatever exits that you can helps diffuse and disperse. Alleviating any ninety-degree Jersey barriers set up when you are doing event-day traffic management. Use curves as much as possible, so you don't have backups, no choke points, and give longer green times to Peds." These are the types of things that we learn. Also, Brian Hoff, from our director of FAST, learned a lot about the technology that they're using to manage traffic, and he'll be researching some of the vendors that they use, including Live Earth software, which we were all very impressed with. We learned a lot about tailgating and parking. There was, as you know, the community in Atlanta wanted to talk a lot and learn a lot about parking. So, here are a few slides that I took. In the end, what we learned is that, we heard from both stadiums, is that actually they're finding they need, needed less parking than they originally thought. People are finding alternative ways to get to the facility other than needing to park onsite or within sight. They do have, at the Falcons stadium, they have 2,700 onsite spots. It is a 71,000-seat stadium. But, within a half-mile, they've got, I think it was within a half-mile, they've got access to 20,000 spots, and that's through partnerships with private sector and private garages. A lot of conversation about how you park and manage transportation for employees. They actually created an app, so that employees find out on the day that they're going to work where they should park and where they'll be working at. They also have a mobile app for paying in advance, paying for parking in advance, which they say helps facilitate, reduce congestion as well. Pedestrian management, lots of conversation about pedestrian management, egress, of course, being the biggest problem. They do have a full team, a little video there, they have a full team of security and traffic management people who are in one room talking regularly about managing traffic and safety and security. This is one of the TMCs, the Onsite Traffic Management Center at the Falcons stadium, the video that you're looking at now. It is operated by Metro as well as their traffic management teams. Lot of conversation about public sector and private sector collaboration and sharing information and meeting. Really, when it comes to traffic management, it is seamless between the public sector and the private sector partner on the effort. Lots of conversation about public transit, MARTA in particular. We learned 20% of all attendees come via public transit. And here's just, it is just a river of people that are coming into the stadium. And I'd like to turn it over to Deputy General Manager MJ Maynard, if I could. She shadowed the MARTA team and the transit team while we were there.
Really, as you can see, over the three hours prior to the start of the game, we watched the crowds increase exponentially, just a mass of humanity. What they have, that we don't have, they have a very robust rail system they've had in place for a number, I think, since the 1970s. So, we've, we learned from, we spent a time, the morning with the MARTA team, specifically Dave Springsteen, who was the Assistant General Manager for MARTA, and it really gained a greater understanding of the, it's all hands on deck. A lot of staff uses wayfinding. a greater understanding of the, it's all hands on deck, that a lot of staff uses wayfinding. The, you know, they don't take fixed route to the stadium because there's so much rail. And a lot of the stations, there is a station here that feeds right into the stadium, and the trade, of course, they increased their capacity and the number of trains they have. But it, it was amazing just to see truly the thousands of folks. And this, what you're seeing here on the screen, that went on for, you know, up to three hours before the game, folks feeding in. So they, Tina's right, they've, most of them drive to a park and ride, and then hop on a rail and get to the stadium. And they do a great job, because it was a little intimidating to see just how quickly they could move this, the number of folks to, into the stadium itself. So we learned a lot about, understand logistics, they've been doing this for a long time. They'll continue to be our transit BFFs as we look forward to learning more, but gain some insight into just the, the all-hands approach from staff, from the AGM on down.
Experimented with so far is what they would call a pedestrian scramble. This is not the video of that. But the concept of closing one of their primary intersections, they closed off to any cars for periods of time. And can you, I want to go back to the, I just want to show the pedestrian, this is the pedestrian scramble here. What they did is, and by that, they mean, this is just open in any direction for pedestrians. They actually stop traffic all four ways for a while and let the pedestrians just flow through. And they found that they were able to clear out the stadium, or this particular corridor, 20% faster by just opening up to the, opening up to Peds. And they're finding that the cars that are held back are actually learning alternative routes to take as opposed to going through this intersection during game time. And again, they do that through Waze and other technology options. So something that we will be taking a look at as well, or working with, with our agency partners on considering as far as a safe and effective and efficient way to move large amounts of pedestrians out of the facility. And just in closing, let's see, I do have to share this, this slide. So there is, this is, you know, here we are in Las Vegas. We do consider ourselves, we rightly know that we know event management, we know how to move people. But I got to tell you, this, this tailgating thing is a different type of demographic and has some different characteristics associated with it. And this was one of them that I was completely astounded by. This was a, the Buffalo Bills' tailgating area, and I get they probably didn't feel a lot of, they won, but still, they probably didn't feel a lot of responsibility for cleanup. But I'm telling you, that, that empty pizza box pile was almost as tall as me. So something for the stadium groups to be thinking about as they move forward. Yeah. In closing, I'll share with you that we had, it was clear that, the message to us was that it takes a collection of many, many partners to pull this off. And there's always going to be something that we forgot to take a look at, or we forgot, we forgot to consider. And one of the, some, some words of advice were, you know, there are going to be gaps that you see, and when you see them, fill it. If you're not the right one to fill it, bring it to the attention of the person who's supposed to fill it, because otherwise, it's just going to escalate into a much bigger problem. So reach out regularly to the people, when you identify the gap, fill it, find somebody who can. I loved a couple of things we heard from the Braves manager. He said, as he was developing his stadium, he believed in the term Carpe intelligensia, which means seize the intelligence. Draw, find mentors, use the, steal the others' best ideas, which is what this whole visit to the stadium was about. And another thing that we heard clearly was, three years, they know we have three years till our, our program, our facility opens, is not that long, so dig deep now. And that is my report. I do hope to eventually do one more, at least one more fact-finding trip. We're looking at maybe Minneapolis or Seattle, both of which have unique transit and transportation aspects that we'll want to study. Open up to any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mayor Goodman?
He is amazing.
He is phenomenal.
You know, I got to tell you, one of his favorite, one of my favorite lines he said was, when people were saying, we wanted a referendum, we wanted to be able to vote on this or that, and he said, you know what? I was your referendum. When you voted for me, you voted for this. And I just, I love that.
Well, and I was just going to say, apropos of the fact, we have been talking forever about light rail, just one piece.
Yeah.
And we have it planned, and we're in environmental study. Enough talking. We need to move to results in our lifetime. And I know Cassim and before him, Maynard Jackson, and I'm, that was the beginning of the rail, that internal rail system. He was best friends with my college roommate. So knowing these pieces, but seeing the connection through the US Conference of Mayors, 1,200 mayors, they worked so closely to find out what they were doing in Dallas and other cities. But my, my main plea right here, and I agree, don't reinvent the wheel. Let's go ahead, find out who's done it well, make it fit for Las Vegas. But the rail, the light rail that's going to come down forever, we're waiting, as the first piece for all the other pieces down Maryland. How can we move that a little bit more rapidly than we're doing it?
Well, you know, we're wrapping up the environmental process right now, and then we'll move it into public comment and outreach. Then the next steps will be to actually start having a very large community conversation about how we're going to fund it. And at this point, we'll be studying very closely what the current administration is going to be looking at in terms of funding future investments in high-capacity transit. But I can assure you, that project is moving along. And I think there's a lot of commitment from, I know not only our board, but a lot of community leaders in, in Southern Nevada, especially some of the business community along Maryland Parkway, the university, the city, to relentlessly move that project forward.
Well, one of the reasons I'm asking, and I've heard from my mayor, Pro Tem Tarkanian, that the rides south on Maryland, the roads are in terrible disrepair. And so my thought was, if there's any way to expedite this and get it moving forward, it sounds to me, from what you've just said, that we're looking at three or five more years.
We are.
And I know we are, three to five more years.
I, I would say so, yeah. Depending on the funding mechanism, yeah.
You know, to me, this is, we have the ability to move things. I mean, because we're the people, and we need to move that along and get it started. It's so significant to all those east-west connections as well. Is there anything that we, as mayors, or anything else that we can do? Who's the tip of the iceberg here? Who is responsible for really having the control to say, we're going to move it on this timeline? Is it this wonderful Dr. O'Handy here?
No. But I think one of the hiccups that we had was with McCarran Airport, the Department of Aviation, where the southern terminus was going to be. We've now come to an agreement with them as to where the southern terminus is going to be. So with that, we're now in a position to have the environmental document done by the end of this year, and hopefully get approval by the Federal Transit Administration by spring of next year. And after that, we move into the hardcore part of the project, meaning the engineering, design, bidding, and then construction.
And can we not move it ahead, at least from Tropicana? Because I know that we'll go by UNLV, bring the students, I mean, certainly our plans for Cashman now that the 51s are going to be moving out. We have so many opportunities there. But I look at all the side connections that possibly would go ahead later on with rail to the stadium, everything else, and moving people. If we start a trop and at least get that piece right now, because having spoken with the head of the airport, because there has to be a major station there, there, I think they're a far ways away, but it looks like we could really move this. So I just really would encourage it. I mean, it's pre-planned, and have the meetings, and find a way to fund it, because it will make a huge difference to everybody in the community.
Yeah, Mayor Astina said, funding is going to be a big issue for us. We have about $125 million of local funds towards the project, but part of the funding is supposed to come from the federal government, about 50%.
Fifty, five-oh, or one-five?
Five-zero percent. That depends on what the current administration does with infrastructure, and we don't have control over that. But as soon as we know, we'll move the project funding forward.
Thank you. It's just a plea. Get somebody on it and move it.
And we appreciate that. I think knowing that our board has strong convictions towards moving this project forward gives us, you know, a little more, more oomph to continue to do so. So I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor Pro Tem?
I wasn't trying to knock Maryland Parkway, by the way. I was going to talk with Chris. I thought maybe you might be waiting for the light rail and then wouldn't have it fixed. But I know that she herself has concerns about that. I'd like to get back to Mr. Iverson, who did not answer, answer his questions about how people were going to get there. And Marty, maybe you're going to cover some of this, maybe the rest of staff is going to cover it. But I know out in the community, the fans feel that the extraordinary leadership that we have in the city will have a nice, easy way to get to see those games. They're concerned about the extraordinary, ordinary people we have that live here in this city, and how are they going to get to games? And otherwise, the ordinary people who are living in are the heartbeat of the city. And so I'd like to know and like to get some information. It's a little confusing in the media. How do we plan to get people to this arena? And I know that we will have some driving, I know there's some pedestrian way we're going to be able to get there. We all know it's not enough, and we all know, and the ordinary fans know, that we do not have a good way yet to get there, and they're trying to figure that out. And is it going to cost them additional monies, or is it handled some other way? So maybe today, we might be able to just touch on that and give us some information. And I did a better job than Iverson. He gets a lot more money, however.
Mr. Chairman? You know, I think we all need to be working together to maybe expedite the timeframe to, to see light rail or some form of, what do you call it?
Oh, next-gen transit.
Next-gen transit along Maryland Parkway.
And we use, I just want to clarify, we use next-gen transit, that's a new term, because, you know, light rail a lot of times will connotate an older type technology. There's been so much advancement in the world of high-capacity transit or light rail type transit, streetcar type transit, that the term we're using now is next-gen transit. Thanks.
And one of the things that struck me when we were in Atlanta was the conversation about how they moved 5,000 people a minute into the stadium. Well, clearly, they've created systems and efficiencies, and I think as we look at our smart cities technology in Southern Nevada and working regionally to look at how we create efficiencies, I think that there's going to be a lot of solutions that are going to be coming forward. We don't have all the answers today, but certainly we'll be working towards identifying those answers where we maybe do satellite parking, or where we do light rail in the future, or the next-gen transit and transit solutions across the community. And so I'm excited to, to be a part of finding those solutions in the community. And I do think Maryland Parkway does need to be an important priority, and if there's things that we can do as local leaders to, to raise that awareness and to have that conversation, go to Washington, you know, this is also a public safety concern as well. It's not just, you know, how we move people, but it's how we move people, maybe take some of the cars off the strip and look at some of the traffic solutions to, to solve our communities' challenges in the future.
Well, very much appreciate your, your offer, Mayor. I think that the takeaway, and we've heard this in Denver as well, the other, other fact-finding tours that we've done, is that elected official champions really have the ability to move the needle. So very much appreciate your willingness, and all of your willingness to be champions, and to be advocates, and to be educators on why this is important for the community. Thank you. And that concludes your general manager's report.
Thank you, Tina.
Yep. Next item is to move on to item number four, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report, Rudy Malkabon.
Thank you, Tina. Good morning, board members. I wanted to start out by expressing our condolences and just with the events, with associated with the shooting at the Mandalay Bay. I was so concerned for, for people that I knew down here in Vegas. I was up in Carson City at the time, but I was very impressed, Mayor Goodman, with your leadership and assurances and comfort during that tough time. And I know that several people in leadership roles in, in the county and the cities down here played a part, but I just wanted to say that. Tina, thank you for the opportunity for Deputy Director Tracy Larkin-Thomason to visit the Atlanta Stadium. I think that we can learn a lot of lessons from what's successful at that venue, other venues where they have a lot of pedestrians, a lot of different modes of transportation to a special event. NDOT definitely wants to play a part in, with the county, with the RTC, with the developers as we craft that plan of how to get people in and out of those events that will be held at the stadium. One of the things that we've done successfully with the NASCAR event is to have counter-flow, you know, use some of the lanes that we have on our roads to, to have directional movement when people come in and when people leave. And it's been successful in that area of the valley for those events. But we definitely can learn more from other venues that have a similar type of NFL events or, or college football events that have a lot of people coming to one location all at once and leaving all at once. Recently, I attended the Association of All the State DOTs called ASHTO in Phoenix a couple of weeks ago, and Transportation Secretary Elaine Chao addressed us about USDOT wanting to assist the states to deliver our programs and our projects. And I really felt a sense that she's, she's very much engaged in that, trying to get all the modal administrations under USDOT, that's highways, transit are two of the most important to us, but also the railroad, highway traffic safety, aviation, all those modes of transportation to work together with their counterparts at the state and local level to be successful and to reduce unnecessary regulation and policies that, that maybe have been outdated. One of those that she talked about was called fiscal constraint, and it really hampers our ability to advance projects incrementally through the process. It's a, it's a good process based on sound policy that you want to, you only have so much money, and there's only so much capacity to review all these projects and develop them. But it really hampered us from getting projects in the plan, because they used to say, you have to have all the money identified for these projects. And we wanted to get them going. There's a planning process, environmental clearance, design, all the way to construction. And sometimes you don't know where all that money's coming from in the construction phase, which is the lion's share of a project. So I was pleased to hear her talk about fiscal constraint being one of the ones that she at USDOT agrees with helping out, because it does affect the RTC. You put together the local plan and have to deal with that issue when we add our projects collaboratively with the cities and the county and RTC. The other thing that she talked about was the infrastructure bill, most likely is coming next year from Congress, because they're going to tackle tax reform next, and they hope to get some of the proceeds for, they're going to fund the infrastructure bill from, from tax reform. We're currently under a continuing resolution until early December from, basically, the, the budget for the current federal fiscal year has to be approved for the rest of, of the federal fiscal year. So we're just temporarily under this continuing resolution. Hopefully, they'll, in December, give us the rest of the assurance that we need for federal funding for the rest of the September 30th of 2018. As we know, Tiger grant applications are due, and NDOT's willing to support any local agency's projects with letters of support. RTC of Southern Nevada has been successful in the past with a lot of those Tigers grant applications, and we wish you success on this round as well. Mayor Goodman, I did speak with the Caltrans Director about I-15 widening, and he was a lot more open this time. Usually, he says he doesn't have any money, it's not on their plan. He said those same things again, but he, we continued the conversation about how do we get it in the plan? And we're going to have our planning folks work with their counterparts across the border to talk about a source of funding called interregional transportation improvement plan projects. So we, we have the, the regional tip. It's the same thing, but it's just between certain regions, they want to have connectivity. And I was making the case that, as you've said, Mayor, that freight is very important, but also movement of, support the commerce between the two respective areas, Southern California and, and Southern Nevada. So he's open to it. He just, I talked to him and his chief engineer about what do we do to get, get it into their, their plan, whether it's a mid-range or, or long-range, what can we do right now? In the short range, they seem to be doing a lot of improvements at interchanges in In the short range, they seem to be doing a lot of improvements at interchanges in Barstow, and he talked about the DeWorre interchange at the bottom of the, of the, what's that pass?
Elko.
Cajon Pass. So, he talked about investments that they've been doing on I-15, but we definitely want to see a widening all the way to the state line.
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My ask. I had written to Mayor Garcetti, and probably it should go to the governor, but preemptively because they got the 2028 Olympics, and we know how slow things move, that this would be a good time, because he's going to want to move people in from all around our state into the Olympics. Plus, we have 155,000 hotel rooms and a great airport that he might want to take advantage of, or whoever is the next mayor and governor of the state. So, I think that's another way, just to keep at it, that California needs to move and widen that. And we, of course, become the beneficiaries because of tourism and everything else we're doing in addition to helping the United States of America move its produce and, and freight. So, but the Olympics was a big piece. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Malcom.
Thank you. We are, our Chief Financial Officer today is meeting with the Treasurer's Office about the next issuance of bonds for Project Neon. We had three issuances planned to, to fund Project Neon. And we are going to talk about what's the, some options available for bonding on fuel revenue indexing funds as well. We received our first deposit of fuel revenue indexing funds, so we can have a better projection of what we're going to receive the first year and then years thereafter. So, more to come on that as we develop our financing and, and funding plans for some of the major projects that we have in the plan currently. We're working with RTC on the coordination for adding those additional projects to the, the update that's going to happen early first quarter of next year or so. And then, the board approved some contracts this week, the Transportation Board approved some contracts for the environmental clearance of the Tropicana interchange, along with the Hacienda-Harman HOV ramps, which is in the vicinity of the, the future NFL stadium. The, they also awarded the engineering contract for the 215 Beltway, I-15 North interchange. So, some good, good advancement of some of these projects, whether it's environmental clearance or engineering design, we're, we're keeping those going. And then, we received bids on the US-95 widening project, which is a collaboration funded with Clark County City Las Vegas Funds, RTC. It's, we received a good bid from Las Vegas Paving, their parent low bidder, should be awarded next month. It's about a $65 million bid from Las Vegas Paving, which was at the lower end of the bid range that we estimated. So, it's good news for us. If we save money on, on that project, it just makes money available from the highway fund for other projects here in Southern Nevada. And that concludes the Director's Report from NDOT.
Thank you, Rudy. Comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Next is your consent agenda, which is made up of items five through 47 and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is item number 48, which we can delete. There is no need to meet with legal counsel. So, we can move on to item number 49, which is to conduct your, your last citizen's participation period.
Second time set aside for public comment? Those wishing to speak to the board? Now is your opportunity? Yep. Your turn.
Hi, good morning. I'm sorry, I was waiting for you to call names. For the record, Patricia Panisi, courtesy of Lupus, that is how we came to be, how I came to be a writer. This past May was my eighth year, and I'm still grateful and happy. So, I'm here today for two huge reasons. One, somewhere in the media, it really should be noted, in my never-to-be-humble opinion, that RTC, Paratransit, the system, Kenny, thank you, you work with Three Square, you work with Union Rescue Mission. I never see that on TV, newspaper, or radio. Second, again, your proven commitment to our community, Eileen Supergirl Customer Relations, David Clyde Superboy Customer Relations. They took it upon themselves to take 50 brochures of the Veterans Transportation Medical Network to each of the VA clinics around town. So, that means there's about 10 clinics times 50. That was a lot of work, and it's much appreciated. And when the clinics get to their last brochure, it's up to them to call for refills. Now, in light of what had happened on October 1st, admittedly, I did not stay glued to my television set. So, Mayor Goodman, I apologize if this has already happened. But I have not seen on any of the press conferences, in addition to the obvious most-needed thank you's, I've not seen or heard publicly in the press conferences, a thank you to Paratransit or RTC. In literally less than 15 minutes, and I speak as a private citizen and a proud writer, how is it that buses that were on the strip were safely removed? Buses going to, leaving, safely removed from danger? A driver had to be notified of the danger, keep their own wits about them, protect the property, the buses, and keep the clients in a quiet mode so they didn't really know what was going on? I know for a fact buses were taken to the Excalibur area, that's freeway close. Road supervisors picked people up and brought them home. I hate to single anyone person out, but road supervisor Armando. So, Mayor Goodman, I really, truly, humbly ask from the bottom of my heart, and again, if it's already happened, I apologize, when it's appropriate, at a press conference, and people are being thanked, if we could remember to thank RTC and TransDev. There were no incidents that night, none of the buses were harmed, folks were taken home safely. Sandy Neely, thank you. Clark Hart, thank you. I don't know how you guys did it in like literally 15 minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. We can bring a mic up to you. You stay right there.
I come to you as a private citizen, really grateful for TransDev and the Paratransit system that RTC is offering us. I was here a couple of months ago, and I was not happy. But, there has been a significant improvement, thanks to people such as Mr. Neely and Mr. Lamore, who is the scheduling manager, and Mr. Howland. Thank you very much. I just want to say that there is still room for improvement, but I feel a whole lot more confident in what's going on right now with TransDev and RTC. And for men like Mr. Latham and ladies like Ms. Espazza, Espazza, we thank you for the opportunity that you have given us and how you take care of us as senior citizens and the disabled. And, and once again, shout out to you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment. Thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.